All right, we're gonna get started with the workshops for November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. It's one oh one. These workshops are being held at the Rio Blanco County, Annex one seven four nine seven, Highway sixty-four, Rangelley, Colorado, eight one six four eight. These workshops will be livestreamed via the Rio Blanco County YouTube channel. Work sessions are intended to provide opportunities for commissioners to study difficult issues, gather and analyze information, clarify problems, or give staff direction. No official decisions will be made. Work sessions are on a floating docket. The schedule is provided for informational purposes only. Sessions will normally be considered in the order in which they appear on the schedule. However, all times are approximate and may begin at the commissioner's discretion. Additionally, the board may alter the schedule, take breaks during the meeting, or continue an item for a future work session date. With that being said, we will start off with introductions and we'll start with everybody that's on the phone. Just so you know, we do not have video, so if you'd identify yourself when you're speaking, that would be much appreciated. Who wants to go first?
This is Vicky.
And this is Lisa Peering. I'm the town manager for Rangelley.
Is that everybody on the phone?
Don and Janay are on there too.
Yeah, we're on video if you can see us, yeah.
But I don't think they have video.
Nope, we don't have video.
We don't have video, okay. So, uh, Don Spearman, uh, In Micker, and Janay Stanworth in Micker.
All right, perfect. Doug, sorry.
Yeah, Doug Case Wetter. I'm the president of Cogency Power in Montrose and have been talking for a year and a half plus with Rangelley about doing some, uh, both demonstration projects and employment opportunities up here.
Jeanie Caldwell. I do marketing for the town of Rangelley and some economic development along with whatever else I'm asking.
I'm Jocelyn Mullen. I'm the town of Rangelley Town Engineer Planner and Recreation Development Coordinator.
Um, Cindy Laub, Rio Blanco County Commissioner.
Hi, Gates, Commissioner.
Jennifer O'Hara, Commissioner.
All right, now we got that out of the way, um, we'll turn the floor over to you guys.
Well, thank you, and what I wanted to do is give you an overview of what we are contemplating doing up in this area and stop me with questions anytime you want. It's intended to be very informal and interactive. Um, starting off, I mean, my first slide is posing the question that this is such a beautiful area. You've got wonderful outdoors, you've got affordable housing, you've got a four-season climate that's wonderful and a really friendly community atmosphere. Um, my observation is that the last couple of years, there are a lot of people wanting to leave urban centers for a place like this. The question is, how do you find employment that matches with their ambition to be out here? And we would like to be part of the solution on that front is to provide, uh, provide good-paying jobs, uh, in the area. So that, and the other obvious question for small towns, Montrose and Rangelley and Micker is, how do you retain your young people? Uh, do they go off to school and disappear and never come home? We want to be able to create something that gives them a, a future that's challenging and lucrative that allows them to stay. So, um, you know, we don't want the communities to get hollowed out and, and with what's happening in the outside world. So, uh, I'm a serious startup entrepreneur. The solar company is my fourteenth of my career um, in a wide variety of, of industries. Uh, I am a natural learner. I like new ideas and like to put flesh on them. My real, uh, skill frankly has been identifying something that's missing in a marketplace and provide it. Uh, and so I seem to have the ability to, to look at a situation and, and find the missing element and then, uh, figure out a way to supply it. Um, I have twenty-five years' experience in oil and gas, so the, the community here feels pretty natural to me. Um, I have done everything from leasing acreage in the Rockies to drilling for gas in Gulf Mexico. Uh, I developed a very large gas pipeline system, uh, two B C F a day in the Gulf of Mexico, in the Eastern Gulf. Uh, I built a liquids processing business in Mobile, Alabama. Uh, did oil exploitation in the Permian Basin and built an oil refinery in Papua New Guinea. So I've had a wide range of experience in the energy sector. Um, I moved to Montrose twenty years ago. Um, I wish I'd discovered it twenty years earlier. I didn't know it existed. I've been to Colorado, but I'd never been to that portion of Colorado. Loved it. I've been concerned in, in Montrose. Um, there are too few jobs with decent pay and career potential. An awful lot of people are working well below their capabilities, uh, so that they can stay there. But, uh, my desire is to try to, uh, provide a, uh, a series of jobs that would allow people to, to reach their full potential, be paid decently and, and, uh, not be sacrificing so much to stay in the region. Um, I'm, I am concerned with the, the beauty of the area. Um, at least Montrose is, is skewing more toward retirement people and people who are buying huge ranches and they, they're not really part of the community there. And, uh, so I really want to try to, uh, create a, a home for generations of working people. That's, that's my heart's desire. Um, as I look around at assets in this region, one of the best assets and the most underutilized asset is the sunshine. That, uh, I've never lived anywhere where the sun shined as much as it does here. Uh, and really anxious to help the region harvest more of the value that exists from that. I'm not a fan of conventional solar. Um, it doesn't really make economic sense unless it's subsidized by government. And that's not really a business if it relies on government subsidy. Um, I'm old enough to remember that in the Carter administration, there was a mania for solar. Government poured a lot of money at it, and when policy reversed, the whole industry collapsed. And I don't want to go there again. And, um, so my desire is not to displace existing energy, it's to complement it. I really am convinced that, uh, the energy challenge for our nation is an all-sources challenge, not a neither-or. Uh, I'm very distressed at the present declaration that, that conventional energy needs to be replaced with renewables. Renewables can complement, uh, the conventional energy sources, but they shouldn't replace it. Um, as I evaluated the, the solar market when I was kind of thinking about launching into it, the most glaring simple analysis you can have is that, that the traditional solar is fifteen to twenty percent efficient, which means they're wasting eighty to eighty-five percent of their resource. I don't know many businesses that can waste eighty-five percent of the raw material and still make any economic sense, but that's what we're dealing with here. So my quest in the decade-plus that I've been working on this was to develop a much more efficient way of doing solar. And we're now in the seventy to seventy-five percent efficiency range. Uh, and we believe that we can deliver, uh, solar power fifty to seventy percent cheaper than, uh, than the public utilities, the retail utilities. So instead of people having to sacrifice to go green, it'll be a good decision, both personally and in business, to use the, the solar that if, uh, you know, uh, a lot of the psychology of the solar business has been, well, you need to sacrifice for your children's future. As a practical matter, very few people can afford that luxury. That you, it's gotta make sense, and we believe that we've got a sensible way of doing solar. Um, our desire would be to develop as much of this technology on the western slope as possible. Uh, we believe it can be a core industry for, uh, for decades looking forward and that, uh, that this area can be known nationwide, worldwide, as kind of the epicenter of well-done solar. That's, that's what I'm really hoping to accomplish. Um, we think that there is a, you know, a highly skilled independent workforce here, uh, that will, where we can provide people with natural resource jobs, which they're accustomed to. Uh, they can work outside, which they like doing, and, uh, that we can, in the process of this, uh, create a, a complimentary path that will kind of broaden, diversify, uh, the economy of this region.
And I'd like to just jump in momentarily. Uh, you know, town of Rangelley and Micker are pursuing opportunities with Office of Just Transitions at the state level. And we believe that the technology that cogency brings to the table can utilize the, the workforce that is already trained in oil and gas development operations, et cetera, do some lateral transfer of that knowledge and skill to this arena as opposed to simply staying in the, the oil and gas and fossil fuel extraction arena and that we could continue being an area with high-paying jobs but in this, uh, additional complimentary, uh, industry. So that, that's something that really interested us initially when, when Doug first came to the table with this proposal.
Have you talked to, uh, the Northwest CDC or the Office of Just Transition about this project?
Um, we've alluded to it, Ty. Uh, all of our early conversations, they said, the buckets that we have available, the buckets of money first, aren't necessarily in that category. So we pursued some other opportunities. We did get a, a grant to do river access improvement on the White River because those recreation and tourism dollars were available sooner. But as some of those other buckets of funding become available, we absolutely intend to pursue those for this project and, and projects like this.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm part of that Northwest CDC on, on that. Um, and the, the second round will be towards, or that's what they're speculating. Um, it will be towards projects like this, so.
And so I'll, I'll be able to describe more specifically the jobs we think would, would fit here. Uh, so I'll get to that in a little bit. I just wanted you to kind of understand what's driving me in all of this. I, um, it may sound weird, but, um, I really do feel one of the, the key responsibilities of a business is to be a, a good local citizen where we're, we're not just taking from the community, we're plowing back into the community where, and you've been fortunate up here in Rangelley where, uh, your, your oil and gas partners have had that mentality. And I appreciate that. I've, I've looked around town and seen all sorts of things they've done to improve the quality of life here. And that's, that's our, our goal is to, to have a similar role in the community. Um, hey, uh, one, I don't, I guess slide number five or whatever it is, it's four or five, um, talks about cogent solar. Uh, just wanted to describe briefly what we're doing and how we're doing it, so if you have some idea. Um, this is proprietary. We've got about seventeen patents issued at this point. We've got another dozen that are in preparation at this, at this stage. Um, and, uh, we, we're not aware of anybody else in the world who's approached, uh, solar from this direction, but we're, we're kind of taking best practices from three or four different, uh, technology areas and combining them. And, uh, so we're not really inventors, we're more system integrators. We're, we're taking, uh, known, proven technologies and putting them together in a unique combination. And so, um, we believe that we are the path to achieving net zero. There's a lot of discussion about net zero, and frankly, most of the discussion is more smoke and mirrors than reality. They can't really do what, what they're promising to do, and so they're kind of, uh, using numbers to confuse the issue. We believe that we can put customers in a position where they produce a hundred percent of the energy they need on location, which is really net zero. So renewable energy produced, uh, by the end user where they, where they're located. Um, we are a cogeneration product, which means we produce both electricity and heat. And, uh, the heat can be used for, uh, for space heating, for hot water, for process heat for industry. Uh, and we can use it, uh, to drive, uh, chillers, which can provide air conditioning, refrigeration, or freezing. So all the thermal demands of, of a building can be met from our system without going through the electrical grid. Um, and so we can take that load off of the, the electric grid's demand, allowing that grid to be used for other purposes. In North America, the average building, sixty percent of its energy is to just thermal and forty percent's electric. It just so happens that our output is sixty percent thermal, forty percent electric. So we think it matches up with the needs of a, an average building. Um, the little diagram that I've got over there tells you a little bit of, of what we're doing. The thermal energy, um, there would be a real problem if we didn't come up with a storage mechanism because, uh, you produce a lot of, of thermal energy in the long days of June, and you have very little thermal demand. And here, we don't have much air conditioning command, demand. So what we do is we store the heat in the ground when we don't need it inside the buildings and then retrieve it when we do need it. So you can store it in June and retrieve it in December or January, February. Um, the ground is a, a lousy thermal conductor, and so the heat has nowhere to go. Uh, in average soil conditions, the heat will move an inch and a quarter in six months. So if you drill a well in the ground, a, a four-inch well, um, and start putting heat in at Easter, by Labor Day, uh, you will have a, a six-and-a-half-inch canister of, of heated soil, heated earth. Um, you, you have a pipe running through it, which, which takes hot fluid down hole. The cool earth absorbs the excess energy. When you want it back, you put cool fluid in the same pipe, run it back. The B T U's run back into the, the fluid in the pipe, you bring them into your building and use them. And, um, the actual loss of, uh, of heat uh, in the process that transfers is miniscule. It's one or two percent. That, if the heat has nowhere to go, you'll, you'll be able to retrieve it. There's a pumping cost to dropping it down in the ground and then retrieving it. That's about five percent. So it's a, the storage mechanism's about ninety-three percent efficient. So, uh, if you put a hundred B T U's in the ground, effectively, you'll have ninety-three usable in the building. And, uh, so it's extreme. The, very few batteries operate at ninety-three percent efficiency. So that is a, a great, a great system. Um, we get between five and six times as much power output per acre, which makes it feasible to produce all the energy you need for a building right at location. Um, we don't have to build solar farms out in the middle of nowhere and then transport the energy to the customer. We can produce it, uh, whether it's, uh, over parking lots, whether it's, uh, on rooftops or in, in, uh, waste land that wouldn't be buildable for some reason. Uh, we can produce, uh, a large amount of, of power, you know, in a very small area. Um, so then I've got a, a slide here that kind of describes technically. The picture that's there is Montrose wastewater treatment plant where we did one of our pilot programs. Um, we've taken, uh, the most efficient solar electric technology in the world. It was developed for NASA, uh, by S N D A Labs. It's manufactured by Boeing Corporation. Um, every satellite in creation is run off of some variation of, of this technology. Um, it's the gallium arsenide multi-junction cell that was designed for that purpose. Uh, efficiency, uh, of the commercial product at the moment's about forty-two percent electric efficiency when silicon is about eighteen. So it's about two-and-a-half times more electrically efficient than the, the panels you see in solar farms. Um, it was not, uh, it's very, very expensive per square inch. Uh, when you're setting a satellite in space, you don't care. Uh, the cost of satellites is so high that what you pay for the solar panels is irrelevant, kind of. But you and I would care trying to put it in our backyard. The cost is too high. And so what we ended up doing was we went to extremely high concentration where we take, uh, a twelve-inch mirror and concentrate it down on a cell that's, uh, a half-inch, uh, three-quarters of an inch square. Um, that's a thousand-to-one concentration. Um, that means that we're only using one-tenth of one percent as much solar material as a traditional solar system. They have thousands of square feet of solar, and we have a few square inches of solar. So our solar is very expensive per square inch, but we don't use very many square inches. And so that makes it very manageable. The high concentration, um, creates its own problem because forty-two percent of the energy becomes electricity, fifty-eight percent becomes heat, and you've got to manage the heat. Uh, if you didn't move the heat away from it, that cell would be incinerated in a second or two. Uh, the, uh, to give you a, a measure, um, the number of watts per square inch of energy that, that hits our solar cell is pretty much identical to the number of watts per square inch that comes out of the exhaust of the rocket that launches the space shuttle. So for thirty years, eight hours a day, that cell's gonna be exposed to that intensity of energy. Forty percent becomes electricity, the rest becomes heat. We've created a, a fluid system that we run across the back of the cell that picks up all that heat, carries it away, collects it, and delivers it to the customer. Most people who tried to develop this technology just hide that heat off into the atmosphere. And I said, no, that heat's valuable. We should capture it and use it. And so that, that's what's really unique about what we're doing. Um, with the addition of the geothermal, uh, we can provide thermal energy twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, during sixty-five days a year. One of the big problems with solar is it's intermittent. Uh, at night or when the clouds are out there, you don't get any benefit from it. But if we store the thermal energy, the sixty percent, we can use it anytime we want, day or night, clouds, sun. So it makes solar a, an ongoing, permanent, continuous, uh, source of energy.
So could I jump in for a second? So, so when we first found out about this technology, it was presented to us from the standpoint of the electric grid is very fragile and there are constant threats to it, and there are nationwide efforts to harden that grid and prevent the kind of rolling brownouts and blackouts that California faces and, and other problems that occur. And I, I didn't respond well to the, the fear factor that, that, that presentation presented. But when I heard about the technology that Doug was proposing as a way to harden the grids and provide redundancy and, and backups to the grid, I became really interested. All of, uh, what Doug is talking about, we are proposing to implement here in Rangelley as pilot projects to demonstrate at full scale what this technology can do. So we, uh, put in a grant application for congressionally-directed, um, spending and received basically a notice that we, uh, are eligible for up to five million dollars in a Department of Energy grant. We are presently working through the pretty demanding paperwork to access that money. But they didn't tell us until, uh, the moment we got the acceptance letter that we were going to be required to come up with a fifty percent match. So if we want five million in DOE funds, we have to come up with five million match. Uh, so, so that's part of what we are doing here. We are coming to ask the county to help with the, uh, state-available I I J A grant funds that are federal dollars available for federal match.
So what's the total cost of the project?
So the budget that we put together, Ty, is about nine point eight million dollars.
So last year, when you guys, about this, a year ago, you talked to us about this, and it was five point three.
And that was what we were asking DOE for, was the five point three. We didn't understand that there was gonna be a match requirement. As we, Doug and I and Doug's lead engineer have scoped out what we want to do in Rangelley, we came up with the three projects that made the most sense, both from saving Rangelley dollars and being able to demonstrate the, the range of projects that are, uh, appropriate for this technology. So we've identified the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, and the Western Rio Blanco County Rec Center as the three facilities we want to develop this technology at. We believe that at the rec center, the, the compelling energy demand there is in the thermal stream because of the heating, the pool, and the building, et cetera. So that represents one challenge and opportunity for us to show how this technology can satisfy those heating and cooling needs at the water treatment plant because we have huge pumping needs. Our distribution system is a pumped, pressurized system. So we have, uh, six, uh, high-capacity pumps at the water treatment plant, which are constantly pressurizing our system, and we consume a lot of electricity at that facility. So that facility will be an electricity-driven demonstration project where we also hope to demonstrate what can be accomplished through pumped hydroelectric storage. And, and that's a really exciting thing that we're trying to study there. At our wastewater plant, we believe it's a mix of both electrical and thermal needs and, and just think that that's a, a great location to demonstrate both those capacities.
So, sorry, let me just ask her, you know, one question while we're talking about this. So I'm trying to understand, when did the nine-million-dollar total price project come in? Because we have your application, and it was five point three. So when did that come into play and why did you only ask for five point three if it was a nine-million dollar?
Lisa, can I jump in, please?
Sure.
So a lot of that is the increased cost, Ty. When Doug and I were doing that, we basically had, Jocelyn was on a vacation, and we had a very short time to come up with our costs, and we did our best to. and we had a very short time to come up with our costs and we did our best to estimate those at that time, which was now almost two years ago when we started that process. And now because of the supply, demand and everything, it has skyrocketed. It's just like everything else. We, and actually our original ask was five point eight for what we thought it would be. And just since that time, it's just like our wastewater project. It went from one million to two million in like less than six months. So that's where the increased cost came from. It wasn't for our lack of planning. It was because of the increased costs that we've experienced with the raise in, um, the economy's costs and supply and demand.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't think it's because of lack of planning. I'm just trying to get my arm dropped around, was it originally almost, almost a ten million dollar project?
It was five point when we started, but once, like I said, inflation increased almost ten percent last year. And then the supply and demand has skyrocketed a lot of the, the things that we'll have to use to make this work.
Right, we also did increase the scope of this a little bit. Uh, I was unaware that Rangeley had a, a fair portion of the investment necessary for this pumped hydro, uh, portion of it. And that the incremental cost of doing a good test on that would be fairly moderate. But that's a new element in the, the thing. The pumped hydro would allow our electrical to be twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five to match our thermal and so the entire package would then become continuous power. Uh, and the, the city already has access to river and pumping facilities at river level and pond capacity at, above the town, which can support a pumped hydro system. So it's, it's a, a moderate additional investment to prove up an important additional element to this. And so, so that, that was an add-on beyond where we were initially. So when did this all take place? Sorry, I know you got a question, I'm just trying to get my. What, what, uh, what, what happened was the, when we applied for the, uh, the earmark from Congress, um, they said that there could be a match of twenty to fifty percent. We didn't know where they were going to come out. When they finally told us that, that we'd received the grant, uh, they came back and said it'd be a fifty percent match. And that, at that point, uh, we went back and said, uh, could we, uh, increase the scope of this? If we're going to have to raise another fifty percent, should we aim to try to have a ten million dollar project instead of a six million dollar project or five point eight? And, uh, so it was to some extent an expansion of the scope to match what we thought the funding was going to look like and so.
But, but Taya also, uh, you know, as town engineer, I do really detailed budgets for construction projects to try to figure out, you know, what, what magnitude we're looking at. And when we actually sat down and put pen to paper on the scope that we had proposed to DOE with the increased costs that we're seeing from contractors bidding on projects and the cost of pipe and raw materials and generators and electrical equipment, that's where the number went from that original five point eight up to nine point eight, basically.
So that was, was that, was that in twenty twenty-two?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Like where, do you remember approximately first quarter, second quarter?
Yeah, I mean, I, this is, has been a requirement of us working through the DOE grant is a detailed budget. So I just completed that grant, I would say in September or October of twenty twenty-two. I just completed that budget. So, yeah.
Uh, the, the other element that was at least news to me, Jocelyn may well have anticipated this, but, uh, the DOE wanted some money expended for, uh, documenting the, uh, value of what we're doing. So instead of it just being a project, it became a science, a science experiment, which they wanted, uh, some resources allocated to kind of tracking, uh, was this, uh, a good, uh, valuable investment in terms of carbon reduction and, uh, and energy efficiency, which is fine. Uh, it, it was a legitimate request on their part, but there were dollars that had to be allocated that direction that, that we hadn't really been contemplating, uh, until they told us what the requirements were. And that's fine.
And it's, it's basically, you know, I, I, I phrase it, it's the cost of free money. Free money isn't free, there are always things attached and the level of documentation required by Department of Energy is pretty mind-blowing. I mean, I, I feel like I will end up probably working fifty percent time on this project alone to satisfy the DOE requirements.
Oh yeah, I think any federal grant you get, you'll, you'll find that that's the case. It's very intensive. You know, in the, in the general scheme of things, that's probably fifteen percent, ten to fifteen percent of the, of the total budget is consumed in, in dealing with DOE documentation as opposed to dealing with the project and.
And that's nine point eight million, that's just for those three places, right?
That's correct.
Correct. Really, there, there are four elements with the pumped hydro being the fourth.
So how long of a period of time will it take you to recover that money?
We don't, we don't a hundred percent know the answer to that, yeah. That's part of the purpose of this project is to document the cost savings that become available by implementing this technology. So that's one of the goals of the research is to be able to tell people for a project of this size, this many BTUs, we were able to save X amount on electrical costs and Y amount on, uh, thermal or natural gas costs, whatever the, the source of energy is. And to, to really be able to provide a basis for economic analyses for other communities and people considering using this technology.
Um, just to, to, in response to your question, in most locations, we're experiencing paybacks in the three to four-year time horizon. It's going to be higher payback here than normal for two reasons. You have extraordinarily inexpensive utilities at the moment. Uh, they're much, I mean, they're thirty to fifty percent less than the national averages. So the recovery period would be longer just because, uh, we're replacing low-cost utilities. And the, the other thing is that this project is burdened with this scientific element to it, uh, which will lengthen the payout somewhat as well. So, uh, in terms of economic payout for the community, if you were putting up the money, uh, rather than getting it from grant sources, you're probably, I would hazard a guess that it's probably more like seven to eight years to recover the cost of the project just because of these, the two unusual elements to, to hear. I, uh, what, what we're hoping will be one of the outcomes of this from, from a project point of view is that we're able to demonstrate in a moderate scale several applications of the technology. We hope that there are going to be people coming in from all over the country to Rangeley to look at these projects, these demonstrations and say, now, we'd like to do it at fifty times that size in our community. Um, so we think that there will be kind of an influx of interest and traffic into this area because it will be, being able to demonstrate multiple things. Hopefully at some point we'll, we'll include the hospital and the college and some senior living facilities. There would be six categories of customers who would want to come here and see how these systems are functioning at, at this level. And so I, Rangeley can become a, uh, a, an education center, if you want to call it that, to the rest of the world about what the potential of this technology is. We hope that we're going to be able to work with, uh, with the college, and we've, we've been in discussion with them about this, where they'll develop training programs to have people coming in from all over the country to learn how to install next-generation solar, how to do, uh, super-efficient, uh, geothermal uh, as a component of this overall system. Uh, and then there, there's some, uh, technology related to affordable housing that we think could potentially be demonstrated here. And then we'd train people who would be able to, to implement it around the country. Um, one of the things that intrigued me about your community was that, uh, Power Northwest has already developed a national caliber program in, in, uh, the aircraft side of things. So it's demonstrated ability to, uh, to develop a training program that was, uh, way beyond the scope of the local community. And we'd like to do the same thing in renewable energy, where this would become a training ground for a lot of other people.
Okay, and I have a question for you. You mentioned Montrose, but how many other systems do you have up and running? And have you done those, I mean, to make sure that it's going to be a viable operation?
So we, we have done five, uh, beta sites. We did a, uh, substantial installation at the university in Kona, Hawaii, uh, to test how well we'd handle marine environment, which is a very difficult environment with all the salt air. It also has volcanic fog, which is horribly corrosive. So this was in, no pun intended, was the acid test of harsh environment, how we perform the thing. Uh, we did a sizable installation, uh, in a hotel in Phoenix to test how we deal with hundred-twenty degree temperatures. Uh, and we've done three different, uh, locations in Colorado to test cold weather, uh, environments. So we think we've, we've taken the range of environmental conditions that, uh, that we'll experience and proven the viability in each of those three locations.
And they're all still running now?
No, um, they were beta sites, so we got the data we wanted off of them. We're not going to support, the, the units that were built were basically hand-built Rolls Royces, uh, which proved the technology, but they're not manufacturable in volume. And so we've redesigned the product for volume manufacturing. It doesn't change the, the way we collect sunshine and the way we distribute heat. It just packages it in a much more efficient fashion so that we could produce millions of them as opposed to a handful of them. So do you have any of those operational now? Uh, we're about ready to, uh, start putting together the manufacturing lines for the high-volume applications. And so. All your pilot projects that you have, none of them are currently operating? Two in Montrose are still operational.
And one was at the water treatment.
Yes, and the other one actually is at my residence. And, uh, what we've, uh, again, just manufacturing philosophy, um, it would be foolish for us to support the old generation of product. What we're going to do actually for all our beta site people is we'll replace the original product with the new generation so that we can support it properly. So we've just told them to, uh, to put their systems on hold until we can replace them with, uh, with the new generation of product.
And what's the new generation product, is that the, which one of these systems?
Well, if you look at the diagram down in the lower left-hand side, the production system is what they'll receive.
And excuse me, just, and just so you folks know, um, many of the members of town council have been to Montrose to see the facilities. I've been down several times and if you folks were ever interested in coming down and touring them, we would love to show them.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
And they have the production system?
No, nobody has, they have not, we've not gone into production yet. So the, the beta sites are the original beta system. And, uh, there are the ones that are still operational are there. Um, we, just, just again, for you to visualize the difference, uh, the beta system, that, that framework, those feet are thirteen feet apart, so it's thirteen feet square and that's ten kilowatts of power. The one below it is sixteen feet, by sixteen feet instead of thirteen by thirteen, but it has twenty-five kilowatts instead of ten. So by increasing, uh, the size by about a quarter, uh, we have, uh, increased the capacity by, from ten to twenty-five kilowatts. And that, that brings the whole cost of manufacture down dramatically. There are other elements to that that, uh, are cost-saving. The, the, the system at the bottom is about seventy percent cheaper to manufacture than the system at the top. And it's about eighty-five percent cheaper to install. And so that's what we've been working on, the engineering has been in refining this. My partner Drew Grenzo, who couldn't be with us today, but, uh, Drew was, uh, on the engineering team that, uh, developed the first laptop computer with Texas Instruments. He finished successfully, Texas Instruments looked at it and said, we don't think anybody'd ever want to have mobile computing. And so they shut the division down and sold it to a tiny little startup in Houston called Compact. And Drew ran manufacturing for Compact up to about fifteen billion dollars a year in laptops. At that point, Dell Corporation said they wanted to go into laptop business and hired Drew and his team away from Compact. And they went and developed all the laptops for, for Dell. So he has gone from a blueprint to multi-billion dollar product lines twice in his career. Actually thinks there's more potential what we're doing here than what he did at Compact and Dell.
Okay, and I have a question then. Um, you mentioned that the, the production system itself, the one on the bottom left, will be eighty percent cheaper to.
To install.
To install.
Right.
But, so which one are?
We're, we're talking about the production system. We're not, we'll never issue any more beta units. Production system will be the product.
But we don't have any, we just have the one production system.
We've, none of them have been, have been built. It's a paper design at this point. The, the, uh, the physics are identical, but the manufacturing is refined. So the, the collection of sunlight and the, the electricity and the thermal are identical. But, uh, how we get there from a manufacturing point has been dramatically refined. And this is the normal process in new product development.
And you have a plant that's, that's going already on this or we?
We have a plant in Montrose, we've got, uh, almost forty thousand square feet in Montrose. Uh, we, uh, believe that we can produce about a hundred million dollars a year of product out of that plant as it is.
That would be a hundred.
For me?
That would be a hundred, no, no, they're, they're about.
A hundred million dollars of, of these would, they're, uh, if we're talking twenty-five kilowatts, we're about sixty thousand dollars apiece. So, uh, sixteen of them would be a million, a hundred million would be sixteen hundred. So sixteen hundred of these units a year could be produced in the Montrose facility.
So this production system that we see down here on the left, what would that, like the sixteen by sixteen, what is that cost?
About sixty thousand dollars would be the retail. What's the life expectancy on those? Thirty years? Thirty? And it, one of the interesting aspects of this is that it won't decline in productivity over that thirty-year period. Uh, normal solar declines fairly steadily. But whatever we lose on the electrical side, we gain on the thermal side. And so it'll be a constant output over thirty years. Um, the blend, uh, from, uh, maybe forty percent electric year one and it may be thirty-eight percent electric at year thirty. Uh, but, uh, but the total amount of energy output will be constant.
And so I have another question.
Yeah.
Um, so how many of those particular sixteen by sixteen units are you going to need on each one of these ones in Rangeley?
We're just in the process of defining that, uh, Jocelyn's just gotten us the, uh, we made estimates initially, but, uh, we're refining it. We got all the power usage figures for all the facilities and we're now engineering this. So this part of, in response to Department of Energy, they wanted the specifics. We've given kind of generic, uh, expectations and now we're.
So what was the generic, are you thinking like ten units for each building, a hundred units for each building?
So we can't really answer that right away in part because if we size it for thermal load, that will, you like at the rec center, that will end up being a different number of units than if we're citing it for electric load. So, so that is one of the tasks that we have to accomplish for the DOE grant, that they're holding us to a, a set list of tasks and milestones, et cetera, as part of, uh, the grant process. And that's something we define as, as the first two or three tasks of the project.
And so kind of uh, order of magnitude, so you have something to kind of size it up in your mind. We're talking dozens of these not hundreds. So, so we're talking maybe.
But that's not, I, I'm trying really hard to come up with nine point eight million here and.
Yeah, I'm wondering the same thing. Like, how, if you don't know how many units, how do you?
So, and are they different costs? Are they a different cost for your thermal? When then they are gonna be just for the, are they gonna be the same and you can?
Right.
Yeah.
The question of how many years of power?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to share my budget with you guys. Each project, um, you know, we, we basically have to start from, from ground zero as you would with any facility construction. So we have to do surveying and engineering, planning and design. And then develop a bid package and then go to bid and select a general contractor and then construct the facilities. We're including pre-purchasing the specialty equipment, which will include the cogency solar electric generators. But also heat exchangers and all of the.
The geothermal uh, side of it is significant. They're drilling the wells and equipping them.
So, so, so the budget comes from construction of three systems. And all of the associated piping, appurtenances and equipment necessary to store the geothermal. Or the, the thermal energy stream in the ground, recover it when needed. And then uh, retrofitting the existing HVAC equipment at each facility. For example, I've, I've been through the rec center plans to understand how it provides space heating and cooling. And how it heats the pool. And we would have to take that thermal stream into the building and use heat exchangers. To then transfer the heat to uh, those, those building HVAC systems. So there's electrical design work included. There's HVAC equipment included. There's um, the monitoring and operation. We have scheduled in. Um, I'll show you this, please don't laugh, but this is a Gantt chart of what we expect this project to take. Including a year of operation of each facility. So we can monitor the operations at length. And we're proposing to do one facility almost all the way through first to learn the most we can. Before we start on the other two facilities. So it pushes the timeline of the project out, but it gives us the opportunity to learn the most from the process before we build the other two systems.
Okay, and how long is this grant gonna be good for?
This, uh, we are requesting up to five years from Department of Energy.
Five years, okay. And when does that start?
Uh, it starts as soon as I get my act together and finish all the DOE paperwork. But also when we can demonstrate that we can provide the matching funds.
And you, um.
The clock probably starts next spring.
Yeah, we're aiming for the March of twenty-three.
Yeah.
So can you, can you scale back these projects? Or can rewrite the grant or have an amendment to the grant? If that's, if that, if you can't get to that level that you guys are looking for? And what other agencies have you guys proposed this to in asking for additional grant funding?
Sure. So um, yes, we could scale it back. We, we are loath to because DOE is willing to give us this multi-year. And they're calling it a single budget cycle, even though it's multiple years. And, and we're afraid if we give it up, we won't be able to get it back in later years. Uh, we're um, so we're looking at the IIJA uh, matching funds. We're also going to be looking at Office of Just Transition funding that's available. We're also looking at some private equity uh, funding. We will also be willing to go to USDA for low-interest loans if we have to. We prefer not to. Uh, but we are basically rattling the cages of every granting institution we can think of. And um, madly filling out grant applications and looking for the matching.
So have you guys had an in-depth conversation with either Hickinlooper Bennett's office, whoever you applied for? And the reason I'm asking, because if you're, if you're anticipating it going out five years. On your application that you guys submitted to them, it was August first of twenty twenty-four. So are they gonna hold you to that?
They have told us that they would go up to five years. And that was one of the reasons why I put together this Gantt chart was to see what we thought we would actually need. And it confirmed if we give ourselves that year operating period. Where we are gathering data and then able to compare it to what, for example. We would have spent on electricity and gas for that facility if we weren't running off a renewable source. Uh, they said they are willing to fund it for up to that five-year period.
Well, what's that extension, Jocelyn, anything to do with uh, the research part of it, you think?
Uh, no, they, they said to us, what do you need? And, and I did this Gantt chart to figure out what we needed. And I'm hoping we can tighten some of these uh, time periods up. For example, we think the wastewater treatment facility project will be a much smaller project and take less time than the other two. But since I, we haven't decided which one we're calling facility A, B, or C. I've left some time in there to allow for that, but we hope we can shorten this up for years. But I always ask for more and have everyone happy with me when I don't need as much time or money. Then say, oh gee, I'm gonna be late and I'm over budget. So.
The, uh, the senator handed off to the Department of Energy, so there's.
Yeah, we, we have one with them that we've applied for as well. So I, I know how that works, but I think the elephant in the room is financing. And, and we've been upfront with uh, Lisa from the get-go that we've already invested those funds. And so we don't have that money available, let alone another five million. Cause initially, when, when I talked to Lisa a couple of weeks ago, it was only a two and, two and a half million dollar match. I was not aware until this meeting that it, that the project had jumped up to almost.
I wanna explain to you, we never intended for the county to fully fund our match. I was telling you what we hoped to get from the county. Because I have talked to both Hickinlooper and Bennett extensively. And they didn't know what department we would be assigned to when we asked for this. So once we got assigned to the energy department, that's when this all played out with Jocelyn. And they know that we are looking for the match and they didn't anticipate that either. And so we have been working with them side by side to try and find these funds. And believe me, you know, I am not letting them off the hook of helping us. But it won't be, you know, something that we have to have immediately either. But we do have to have at least a commitment.
Yeah, so, so here's the problem that we're in. We granted out four million dollars of CCITF towards the Wolf Creek Reservoir Project. We've been committed to not go below that twenty million dollar mark. So this year, for example, the funds that we can grant out are very, very limited. Some people are not gonna get anything. So.
I'm not asking for CCITF. What I, I was very specific about this. Because it was John Forthout and Dana Hablick were the ones that told me that.
Yep.
The funds that the county did receive are eligible to match federal dollars. And that's where I was pushing our interest.
Yep, I completely understand that. So what we have done is we've invested that money. Since the interest rates are up, we've locked it in and we're getting a very good return on those funds right now. So where I was going with that, Lisa, is we are, we have, we as the county have so many projects. We're looking at our capital improvement projects for road and bridge alone, just for our bridges in the next four or five years. I.
Four years.
Four or five years, like thirty million dollars. So we do not have like that kind of money to, to give out. I mean, it's, bottom line, we just don't. And I was trying to make that point with CCITF. I didn't think you were trying to go for CCITF funds. But my point being with that is like, the county is in the same pinch as everybody else. We don't, simply do not have that money to just put out there.
So I guess I'm confused, Ty, because I thought this was additional money the county could apply for to specifically match federal funds. I didn't think this was money you already had in your budget.
No, no, Jocelyn, they just said that this is money they, the counties were getting to use towards whatever, you know, their projects were. And it's not like an applying thing. They, they just get the funds.
Okay.
And it wasn't the two and a half either? It was like one point six, one point seven?
Janay, how, I mean, we only got a first, first tranche of it, so I don't know.
I believe the sheet that I had was like one million, one, or one ninety-seven.
Yes, that's correct, Lisa. It, we should receive two payments. The first payment was after we submitted the application. Um, and so we did submit that back in October and we did receive the first distribution of payment. The second distribution will go out sometime after January twenty twenty-three. Um, but they have to see who, which counties actually came and um, requested that distribution of funds. Because it was pretty much another PILT payment that we received.
Thanks, Janay. So thinking creatively, and, and you kind of touched on this. Um, is there a chance for like private funding, like if the residents were to get a cut of this? If they were able to, to get in on, on the renewable side of it? Is that a, an option that you guys have explored?
Um, that particular option is not one we've explored, explored yet. Right, because, because we're still calling this, you know, full-scale demonstration. I'm, I'm not sure we can market it, you know, you know, lock in and get lower electricity rates for the next twenty years kind of thing. Um, with this, we hope to get there after we prove out the technology with these projects, but I don't think we're there yet.
Um, Ty, um, I'm in the process of raising substantial capital. Uh, for this effort moving forward. And it's conceivable that we could use some of our capital as part of the match. I have mentioned this to Lisa as a possibility. We wanted to see what the uh, opportunities were for public matches first. But we are willing to be a stopgap in the background on this. So um, so yes, there, there is the possibility of private funding for part or all of that fifty percent.
Okay.
We just are, are trying to have many irons in the fire in the hopes that some of the irons will heat up adequately. And provide us with a payback because we don't want that to be the reason we can't move forward with this project.
And we are gonna pursue funding through the, the Colorado Energy Office too. They just haven't really panned out with anything yet. And like I said, Ty, this was just brought up in an agency meeting, so it's exploratory. I, I realize that funding is minimal, but like I said, there's not many federal dollars that match federal dollars. So we had to at least take a shot.
Sure. No, I, I, I think it's a good, good conversation. It's worth having for sure. But I think, you know, I, I think maybe the community that wouldn't be able to afford this technology, like you have it on your house. If they're able to maybe give donations or invest in it or however you guys receive that to look. And, and they get a, a, a cut of that. Because if your return on investment's eight years, last year we looked in-depth into putting all of our county buildings on, onto solar. Just to help reduce our, our overall utility cost, and it wasn't cost-effective. I mean, even with Moon Lake, like really, really low rates, we are returning on investments. Those solar panels would, we would be buying new solar panels before we could even pay them off.
You know, and it's interesting, you guys, because as I said, we just got all the energy bills together to start this analysis. I think we're paying two and a half cents a kilowatt hour, not including demand, um, fees, et cetera. And I asked my husband in Grand Junction, we pay twelve and a half cents for kilowatt hour.
How much is this gonna be? How much is it?
Um, in probability over the life of the equipment, we're looking at uh, about three cents a kilowatt hour. Low level for thirty years.
But that includes the thermal energy demand too, not just the electricity demand. And our gas prices per equivalent energy unit are significantly higher than that.
All in the, the costs as, as we analyze them enough. The, I'm, I'm giving approximation, but it appears that uh, demand charges and everything added together is about seven to seven and a half cents. Uh, all in costs here, we should be able to provide for three. So.
I mean, that's gonna have his work cut out for him because our gas prices in Rangeley are low because we negotiate those through the town. And Moon Lake is low, so he knows the challenges it can have too.
Yeah, yeah. So uh, this won't be as spectacular. I mean, in Hawaii, they're paying forty cents a kilowatt hour. We're talking twelve-month paybacks in Hawaii, but.
So have you had this conversation with like the city or, uh, of Grand Junction or Mesa County? I mean, if they're paying outrageous prices for a kilowatt hour like that. I think that their ROI on, on something like this would be much greater than.
If we were only looking at this as a project issue, Rangeley would not be our choice. If we're looking at it as a, uh, a demonstration of a variety of applications, Rangeley becomes an attractive option. To do something in Grand Junction on the scale we're talking, we're talking thirty times the investment. It's a much harder thing to put together there than it would be here. So the notion of having uh, a group of applications demonstrated in a single location. Uh, and on a modest scale is what makes Rangeley attractive. And also the, the notion of potentially uh, taking some portion of our manufacturing facility and locating it here. Uh, to provide local jobs. Um. If we were looking for rate of return on projects, uh, Grand Junction wouldn't be on the radar screen really either. Uh, there are so many places in the country that are dramatically more expensive. Twelve and a half is, is about national average. Uh, and so they're much more attractive places if we're just looking for uh, pure project returns. Um, but we think there are other reasons why uh, this area uh, would be a good starting place. Uh, where uh, a number of different applications can be uh, demonstrated on a moderate amount of capital. Um, and we're, we have big projects that are uh, under discussion in places where the costs are very high. Uh, and that's fine. Uh, ultimately we'll get there. But we felt like in the early stages of our production, uh, this was a logical place to start. And uh, so, but in terms of, if you're just looking at this as uh, purely project and project finance. Uh, this would, would not be one of the most attractive places because your existing utility costs are so low.
Yeah, and that's sort of from a business standpoint where I was trying to get at. If, if I were in your shoes, I would wanna go make that big case and say, look, I just saved these guys, I cut them from twelve down to three.
I can tell you, it would take three to five years to get approvals in any municipality. That's one of the reasons Rangeley makes sense because decisions can be reached in a reasonable length of time. Um, and uh, so we, we've been talking, the city of Houston has approached us. And they want us to equip the entire Houston Intercontinental Airport. Good project, it'll make very good economic sense, but it's, it's three to four years approval process. Fine, we'll work through the three or four years, but uh, we can't wait for them to uh, make up their minds and, and allocate the funds. So uh, there, there's just a, a, a wide variety of factors that have to be considered. Um, we uh, I, you know, I've been in. Bi-weekly discussions with President of Poland, who would like to roll our technology out nationwide to eliminate their dependence on Russian energy. Um, and very excited. I mean, we've been having really productive, but it's, it's a ten-year process.
Yeah.
And uh, so uh, I think we'll, we'll have the opportunity to do that and it'll be good. But uh, but in the near term, we'd like to do as much as we can to demonstrate capabilities in our own backyard.
I have one other question. Um, you were talking about the increase of jobs or the lateralization of jobs. How many, I mean, once this is in, isn't it basically?
No, the, the project is the smallest part of it. The, the thought is that we would do some of our manufacturing activities here, which would provide permanent. The, the thought is that we would do some of our manufacturing activities here, which would provide permanent jobs. And so there, there are three different phases of our manufacturing that we think would be appropriate to do here. And would kind of leverage off uh known skills in the community. Uh, and so the construction jobs will be minimal and they'll be short-term. You're correct.
What are you thinking as far as the manufacturing piece here?
We uh, uh, if you go back to the diagram of the uh, the system, uh, all of our controls, the, the pumping, the uh, and the, the thermal and, and all the electronic controls are uh being uh situated in uh shipping containers. So we pre-put all the control package together in the factory and test it in the factory. We think we could build those, those system control boxes here. We'd ship in empty shipping containers, we'd have people here, they're, having come out of the oil field. I know there are a lot of people who are accustomed to uh SCADA control systems. They're accustomed to pumping and a variety of other functions that we do. So we think that, that there would be a natural community here of people who would understand those skillsets. And that we could effectively equip those containers and then ship them to wherever customer out of here. So that, that's one item. Um, the uh wiring harnesses that hook up all of our electronics in the system. Uh, we were making, when we were doing our beta sites, we made them in Cedar Edge, which is about the same size as Rangel. We found people who uh very competently were able to do that. We think that could be done here.
And they're still doing that now or they're not?
We, we're not in production at the moment, so it's not, it's not being done. But uh, the individual who is running it at Cedar Edge died a year and a half or two years ago. So we'd be back looking for a new lead person to run that operation. Um, a lot of the structural side of what we're doing, the trusses that will, will be the, the the base of the structure and the frames uh are, are welding activities, which again, I think uh welding is a, a skillset that people are comfortable with and good at here. So those three things, uh, we're probably looking at uh forty to sixty jobs among those three things uh initially that could, could be done. Um, one of the things we'd like to do frankly is uh build uh a net zero housing community using our equipment. And give employees first option to move into the community. Um, so that they could live in what they're producing, uh, have a chance to, to taste of their own production. So we'd like to build affordable housing that uh is net zero energy. Um, and uh, and have the employees, it would be one of the perks of working for the company is that you would get nice quality housing with a zero energy bill attached to it.
What's, what's your timeframe to get the manufacturing up and running here?
Oh, probably twelve months.
From the time you.
From the time you got the money?
Yeah, and we, we have a contract for our equity uh that is due to close the first of December. Uh, hopefully that will happen. So the clock is about to start running. Um, we would probably uh commence training for this activity in seven or eight months with the expectation that the first product would roll out the door in twelve months. So we'd be hiring people in six to eight months and then uh hitting the full uh capacity in twelve. Um, and there, there are a lot of logistical things we have to work out to, to confirm that this makes sense. But uh, everything we've seen up to this point uh is encouraging. We think it's, it's real and can be done. Um. And our, the financial partner who's talking about putting up this major equity injection for us uh has several other businesses that might be suitable to bring into this area. And so they, uh, they would really like to get into conversations as well. Uh, they, they would like to co-locate uh facilities with things we're doing. And so uh, uh, so we'll, we'll see. But uh, um, again, one of the things that is uncertainty for me is, um, you know, how, how hard it'll be to gather a workforce up here. Uh, you know, obviously uh we're, we're just gonna have to feel our way along on that. Uh, I would anticipate that if we do our job properly, that we'll be a, a preferred employer for people coming out of Colorado Northwest, that they'll get some training programs through the college that will equip them to come work for us when they graduate. So we would, the, the hope would be that a lot of the students will, that'll be a funnel that will lead people into our, our manufacturing operations.
And staying in the area.
And we, we anticipate that um we will be training people in the solar installation and that um, that what, what we'd like would be to, to set up teams that could base out of here and service, uh, you know, a two or three hundred mile radius from here out of this location and be installation teams. Likewise, the geothermal, what, the, my partner who does the geothermal with us is one of the half dozen leading geothermal experts in the U.S. at this point. Uh, Google uh decided they wanted to examine geothermal for a lot of their big facilities. They hired him as the consultant to guide them through all that. And they did in fact accept all of his recommendations and implemented what he told them to do. They were so excited about it that their venture capital arm, Google X, created a geothermal company based on his uh, his training of what could be done. And so that, uh, that company is in existence. Uh, we believe that he can give some unique skills to teams who could uh become geothermal, geothermal installers and designers really nationwide. That he, he has some understanding. He was uh the patent holder on most of the technology for directional drilling to be able to drill horizontal oil wells. He was the guy who'd invented most of the steering motors and things that, that led to that. But he's a, a real expert and uh we believe that he can cut the cost of geothermal installation to less than half of what's being experienced most of the country and train people how to do that. We're hoping that Franchly in Colorado Northwest will be the, that it, it'll be a school people will come to from all over the country to it and that will create specialty teams who can uh, can go out and execute on this. Uh, whether it's regionally or nationally is yet to be determined. But uh, um, but we, we would very much like to work with the community to develop these capacities. And it makes more sense to adhere, uh, our geothermal expert lives in Montrose and uh to use his expertise to train people locally uh makes sense rather than having him play all over the country hands-on do stuff. That if he can equip people to replicate his skills, that's the best use of him. So that, that, you know, that's part of our vision for the, the community. Um. I'd like to circle back to one other issue just briefly. Um, I don't remember how long ago it was when we brought David Tice in, but there's
I can look on there.
A, a national figure in this area of grid security who is very well-known, very high-profile, just finished doing a, a one-hour documentary film that uh is receiving a lot of, of play around the country. And uh, I really believe that the grid is pretty fragile at this point. It's uh, it's uh old, has not been maintained well. Uh, what we see in California and in Texas, I think is just the tip of the iceberg.
That was, that was July.
July, okay. We, we, we're gonna see a lot more instability over the next few years in the grid. If Franchly can demonstrate protection of key infrastructure from grid insecurity, I think that uh the world may be beating a path to the door here to try, learn how to, to implement this in their own locations. And uh, I, uh, you know, I agree with Jocelyn that there's been some scare tactics attached to this that aren't pretty and are really kind of inappropriate. But the truth of the matter is it's a real problem. And I think, uh, quite frankly, the move to electric vehicles just aggravates the problem. It's putting a lot more strain on the grid than it's really designed to maintain at this point. And so I think communities are gonna have to start thinking in terms of, you know, if the grid starts to get funky on us, how do we maintain essential services? So clean water, water treatment, the rec center is of some importance as um a, a potential gathering place for the community. If the grid has gotten erratic, you could know that there's a warm place to go that potentially could provide uh meals and shelter in the midst of, of, of the grid getting uh erratic. And so, so we think though, and you know, having, having the hospital facility hardened against this sort of thing could be a model for the rest of the country. Again, uh, Ty, you know, I hope I, I communicated clearly, but um it's one thing to do this in a town of two thousand, it's quite another thing to do it in a community of millions. And to be able to demonstrate the possibilities on a modest scale uh is really valuable. And uh, and that's, that's what has us intrigued here. It's not in terms of short-term profitability, the best place to go. But in terms of um awakening the world to the possibilities so that bigger scale things can be done, uh, this may be exactly the right place to start. And, you know, we have a, you know, five to ten-year time horizon, not a six-month or twelve-month time horizon. Uh, if we were a public company, we'd be worried about quarterly earnings. We're a private company, we're wanting to build the best long-term solutions. And we think that Franchly has a place to play in, in the early stages of this that could be really strategic. And I would hope to be a blessing to the community. The, the goal is that uh we can create something that'll, will create economic vitality here that will last for a generation or more. And that. You know, I, I don't want to come across as this crazy dreamer, but I'm a little frustrated with the urbanization. I think we've lost something of the culture in the process of everything flowing to the big cities. And I would like to revitalize the small towns. Uh, I think the quality of life and relationships are vastly superior here. And, but, but these smaller towns, Montrose included, are being drained at this point. That everything's being pulled kind of by a magnetic force into the cities. And uh, we've got to create some, some pullback in the other direction at this point. And that's, that's where I'd, I'd like to be involved and do as much as I can uh to help the small to medium-sized communities on the western slope start to, to pull some really high-quality employment back out of the cities into, into places. I, I assume it's true here and from what the people I've met in the community, I, I think it's true. In Montrose, I have numerous friends who are really capable, people who are doing significant things in the outside world chose to move to Montrose for quality of life purposes and accepted employment that's considerably below what they could do if they were in San Jose or, or Boston. Um, and uh, and if, they're happy with the trade-off. But I'd be even happier if I could provide them with jobs that are up to their capabilities right in Montrose.
Well, I think, I think you're right on the ship. I think, you know, legislation is, we're constantly under attack. Our livelihood in Rio Blanco County, from oil and gas to coal to bag industry with the introduction of WOLFS. I mean, you name it, it's on and on and we fight it every single day over and over. But I think the shift that we're seeing is people moving into our communities that are able to work remote as a direct impact of COVID. If there was one thing good that came out of COVID, I think that would be it. But I, I mean, I can't tell you how many people I've met that have moved to our county because of the broadband project that, that we have.
Yes.
And the high-speed internet. So I think, you know, we are attracting those people and they're still maintaining their quality of life and, and good jobs. And it's probably cheaper here. Um, I read an article, it's probably been six months ago or, or longer. But in the Silicon Valley, those bigger um brick and mortar um businesses were actually paying their employees to move to places like this. And they're gonna pay them on the high end of the pay range for the place they live here just to work remote because they're saving money that way. So I think, you know, that, that was a huge.
There's also the, the flip side of that, Ty. Um, there's also companies forcing people to come back from remote work, just like Twitter recently. Elon Musk said, come back or lose your job. And so that was what I.
I ran a computer peripheral in, there's a company in Silicon Valley and it was the worst experience of my entire business career. Um, we had over a hundred percent turnover annually. The employees had zero loyalty. They were moving out, uh, you know, you'd get somebody trained and six days later they'd find a little better job down the street and leave you. I had a million and a half of lab equipment stolen by employees who had uh quit work on, that wouldn't announce to me. They decide to take a new job on Friday afternoon, they come into the lab on Saturday morning and take a twenty-five thousand dollar oscilloscope, put it in the trunk of their car and disappear over the horizon and start work Monday morning at another company. Um, the notion of having people who know how to work and appreciate having a quality job uh in a place like this as opposed to in Silicon Valley, um, this is the right place to employ people. So I'd like to bring physical tangible labor back as well as the telecommuting or the, the, the computer commuting thing. I, uh, there's another part of me that's very frustrated by what's going on in our society at large. We've gone so far into the services side of things. Um, no country can survive without producing something at some point. You, you've got to, gotta make something physical tangible at some point. And I very much would like to uh draw some jobs back into physical tangible manufacturing. Um, I think we've gone way too far in the direction of, of uh employment dependent on services. Um, farming out all of our manufacturing to China or India or Vietnam is really not a winning strategy long-term. We've got to do some quality manufacturing here. And uh, so that's fine. I mean, that, that, those are my motivations. And doing it in small-town America, particularly the western state of Colorado, is, is of importance to me. As a, a philosophical commitment, not just a business decision. I think it's a good business decision too. I don't have any problem justifying doing it. But uh, but there, there are uh intangible reasons why this is of importance to us.
And, and what, what is the benefit to Rio Blanco County as a whole? Um, with this, with these three projects, as well as, is there any rate of return possibly to Rio Blanco? If we did, because really this is an investment is what you're asking for from, is an investment. So what, what are we looking at if, if that's, if that's possible? If we had that conversation of what we could invest?
You know, I, I don't know if I can exactly quantify that and, and because of the sort of still research and development nature of what we're doing. We hope to be able to demonstrate significant cost savings of the project to the community. Um, we would hope that it would bring in uh more residents to the county, so greater tax base. Um, you know, uh, higher paying jobs and um some real estate development to support that manufacturing and some of the other components. Uh, increase of programs for the college, which also benefits the county as a whole. But I, I'm hoping, you know, just as Rio Blanco County was the guinea pig for the rollout of the broadband. and we were the first county in the state and we showed what can be done here and the benefits from it. We're also hoping that the benefits from this project trickle out to the rest of the state and, and region west and, and anywhere where there's adequate, you know, solar or sunlight. So I, I can't, we can't promise a direct return now, you know, with a, you know, X percent that however many years to the county, but we believe that there will be significant tangible benefits from people coming here to see the demonstration projects, what they're capable of infusing, you know, dollars into the economy that way. And then from the development and the increase in manufacturing and the jobs that are developed, we think there'll be an overall benefit to, to the county as a whole.
The, the one aspect that's a little hard to totally get your hands around, but I think it's very real. I think it's very clear that our, both federal and state government want to force more expensive energy on the nation at large. They view it as a transition to renewables. And we believe that what we're doing is a counterbalance to that. Being able to satisfy the environmental instincts of the, the government, but do it at a cost that doesn't punish the consumer. And so locking in level energy costs for a 30-year period of time could be invaluable in a situation where the government by policy is trying to drive the prices of energy out.
But we're only talking about three buildings at this point. We are not talking about our community as a whole because as a resident, I'm going to have to still purchase. My home is going to have to be refurbished to accommodate that geothermal. So I'm still going to have to pay out on some level on my end.
Well, and what would be the ideal outcome would be to, once everybody's satisfied, the system is functioning the way it's supposed to and what the cost of it's going to be, to then roll it out to the entire community. I'd love nothing better than for Rangeley to be a hundred percent energy self-sufficient three or four years from now, five years from now. We, we anticipate that we are going to be able to provide customer finance on everything that we do over the next five to 10 years. So you wouldn't be out of pocket. We're not expecting local citizens to have to buy a system and put it at their house. We would provide the system and charge a, you know, a level utility cost. And so it should be a cost savings for everybody from day one.
But as a Rangeley resident, we also hope and through this project to reduce energy costs at those three facilities, which could help either prevent increases in water and sewer rates and rates at the rec center or, you know, if, at, at minimum prevent increases, but possibly in the long-term lower costs, which would be a direct benefit to residents.
We have plans to, to create nets area neighborhoods. We're talking with some of the larger developers in the country to do it with new construction. But we also believe it's possible to retrofit communities with what we're doing. And, and the, the economics of it, I think, should be pretty attractive.
Now, if you were to, to what you had just said earlier about putting it on and, and then you would put the, the units on and charge them basically, wouldn't that almost be like you'd have to be licensed with the PUC on that one too? I mean, you would be a utility.
It, it depends. Very few places in the United States are regulating thermal utilities. We're 60% thermal and therefore we may be under a different kind of regulatory regime than electric utility. The electricity is incidental, the thermal is basic. So we've had discussion with regulatory authorities about that. I'm not sure, it's not settled yet what that would be. We, we've had some preliminary discussion with utilities and we may end up doing joint ventures with local utilities to serve their customers. And we'd come under their regulatory regime that way.
But there, there's also, you know, been a huge increase in third-party financing where like a solar company would come in, analyze your use, say you could use an X number of kilowatt system at your home. And if your energy bill is on average $75 a month now, we could guarantee it would be 40 a month. They pay the capital cost of the equipment and the retrofit and they get the difference in the profit from whatever it actually costs to that 40 a month. And you get a known commodity of savings of that $30 or $35 a month known savings. So you're not realizing all the benefit of it, but you're realizing a benefit of it. And so that's one way to publicly finance it.
But the problem with that is like WRA is contracted through tri-state at 5% of their electricity can only be renewable. That's where we run into issues because you cannot, you cannot net meter stuff back. So there is no benefit in doing that. I mean, yeah, it's going to lower your monthly cost as, as long as the sun's shining. But if we had a day like yesterday where it was snowing, it's, you're not going to do anything. And, and you're just pumping electricity back into the grid at that point. And that's if they approve your connection in that.
And that's why we are looking at that pumped hydroelectric as a way to also store the electrical portion of the energy.
And not have to put it back into the grid.
And not net meter back into the grid.
You know, that, I mean, how much is stored is what I keep coming back to. And, and then to go back to you saying that, that you would provide either a unit or a well, so to speak, to, to every home at a cost to the consumer. So basically we're, we're buying a, or we're buying a car. Is there going to be a unit and/or a well at every location?
The most efficient, we probably will not sell one house at a time. The, we've looked at it and we think that if you can have 20 houses in reasonable proximity one another, the math works. So it wouldn't have to be all, you know, if, if 20 houses out of 50 in a neighborhood wanted to do this, we could serve those 20 at a cost-efficient basis. And we, they'd share wells, they'd share solar generators. And we would, we would just bring an electrical line and a thermal connection to their house. And there'd be a meter that would show how much, how many BTUs and how many kilowatt hours they're using. And so it would, it should be largely invisible. It'll be similar to what you're paying in current utilities. We would just have a, an administrative arm behind it that would, would divvy up the costs and benefits to the, the people. So there are regulatory issues we're going to have to work our way through. This is early days. I frankly think the utilities are going to be forced to deal with this over the next five years because the demand from the electric vehicles is going to be starting to overwhelm them. And they've got to think of other, of ways of relieving the pressure on themselves.
You know, and from a local standpoint, you know, Alvin Randring just announced at a meeting I was at the other day that they're putting a call on the White River starting, I believe, this month or November because they have not been able to get adequate water to run their hydroelectric generators. And, and the, the reservoir is filtering in. So if we don't get a Wolf Creek, I, I don't know what the numbers are in terms of how many years' capacity we have left at Taylor Draw. But, but we will definitely some, see some increase in costs in order to maintain that hydroelectric power. So, you know, one of the benefits of this technology is known costs for a fixed period of time, not subject to Texas freaking out in February and causing our natural gas prices to skyrocket, you know, to 10 times their normal cost, that kind of thing. So, so leveling the field and known commodities are a big advantage of this.
The great news about western Colorado is having 300-plus sunny days a year, which makes it much easier to manage the solar. It's a, a harder proposition to do this in Boston than it is here. And so the, the loads are more predictable here than they would be in other places. And that, that's good.
You, you asked a question about, you know, how, how long we'd have storage for. That's part of our whole sizing exercise. We can't answer that question now. When, when we get into that task and start looking at, you know, how big would our pond capacity have to be? How big a hydroelectric unit would we have to install? What are the costs to be able to have X number of days of storage versus X number of weeks, et cetera? Those are all analyses that we will have to look at, at that time to make those decisions. We have not analyzed it enough to be able to answer that now.
But the, the good news is that in this part of the world, you are never going to have to deal with extended periods of underproduction because we don't have two weeks of, of gray weather. It just doesn't happen here. You, you may have three days, but you're not going to have two weeks of it. And so, so our ability to, to manage that in, in this climate is much better than it would be in most places. And so we'll, we'll see. I mean, that, that's part of what we're doing here is to do in real-world conditions, see how this would apply and how well it would work. So, you know, thank you guys for hearing us out on this. We're enthusiastic about being part of the community and, and believe it's going to be beneficial to the community. And we believe it's, it's the right, you know, path for business development for us as well.
Perfect. I do have one last question. Has the town of Rangeley committed any funds towards matching? Non-grant dollar funds, I should probably say.
So I think Lisa got disconnected from the call and she said she was trying to come back on, but I don't know if she's been able to tie. She told me in a, in a document that we are looking at committing $500,000 out of our reserves to support this project. I don't know if town council has actually voted on it yet, but I know, I believe it's part of our budget package that we're presently working on.
And I think it's pretty much a given that the agency will be contributing some portion of that 50%. It just, at this point, it's been impossible to determine what portion of it we will contribute to the whole. But we'll, we'll work that out. And so we, we will be making a, a significant contribution into the $10 million as well.
And I think, you know, beyond that $500,000 that I talked about in cash, Ty, right now I am working out, you know, the hours and the people who are going to be working on it and all the in-kind and labor and equipment hours that we will be contributing to the project, which would be fairly substantial.
Will they count in-kind contribution?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
Do you have any questions, Seth?
I'm really interested in discussing. Is it, are you going to use any power off the grid at all for this? Or is it just net zero? You're going to take some off?
I mean, theoretically, we want to get to a point where these facilities are totally self-sustaining. Don't need to, to take anything off the grid.
But right now, like the grid goes down, your system goes down.
No, no, our system can run independent, a modest amount of battery power does start up and then it runs totally separate from the system, totally self-contained. So we, we have small batteries attached in which we keep continually charged. We just need a very small amount of energy to kickstart it in the morning. And then it's self-sustaining from there forward.
We, once we are further down the road, we plan on having detailed conversations about, with Moon Lake, about what interconnect thing would require and, and how we could do that. But we are prepared to make some or all of these self-sufficient if they won't allow the size of the system that we feel we need from the side.
And we haven't really talked about this, but to the extent there's an energy imbalance, we may provide power to some neighboring facilities. If we have an excess of power at a given time, we'll, there's an animal shelter next to the wastewater treatment. We can provide heat to that facility, for instance.
Right. We've identified facilities for each of the projects with four or five nearby facilities.
If there's overflow, we'll, we'll be able to provide it to neighbors.
But how are you, how are you getting geo-energy into the house, found electrically without a compressor?
There, there's no need for a compressor. All that's needed is low-energy line pumps. And we would have to have a storage capacity of some sort to support the line pumps. And that, it's in proportion to the amount of power being delivered or energy being delivered, it's very small. But it is, you're correct. It, it, there, there does have to be an independent electrical source. My preference, the pumped hydro is by far the cheapest solution to that. If lacking the pumped hydro, there are flow batteries that have been developed in Australia that are a non-toxic, low-cost source of, of ongoing electrical storage. And we may want to tie in some of that capacity for exactly what you're describing, the emergency. The grid's gone, how do you keep the line pumps going to deliver the, the heat where it's needed? So, but we're talking 3% maybe of the amount of energy being delivered is being consumed in the, the pumping exercise. All you're doing is pumping fluid. You're not having to, to do compressors or, or anything that is a, a drain. You just are running through a heat exchanger.
I understand that, but without a compressor, how are you getting the BTUs from the 45-degree ground to 70-degree houses?
Well, geothermal water, water heat pumps do that, especially with no compressor.
Because, wait, wait, though, you may be missing a component of this. So the, the parabolic concentrating arrays create, capture the heat that's generated when the gallium arsenide cells are excited. So, so that hot water is being pumped into the ground. Either it's being pumped directly into the home for space heating and cooling. And if not needed, it's being stored in the ground, at which point that's when you need the line pumps to reach.
So at midnight, at midnight, it's going to pump some of that ground, it's going to heat up 70 degrees.
Well, we anticipate that the, the geothermal wells will be at maybe 110 to 120 by Labor Day. And so the, the fluid that's going to be fed into the system will have been preheated above your target. By Easter, when you deplete it, it may be backed down in the, the, you know, 50-degree range. But the, the water, water heat pumps are able to take 50-degree groundwater and deliver 75-degree.
And that was a component I was missing. You were, you were heating the ground up to 100 degrees.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, and because the ground is such a poor conductor, we're only heating a, a small canister of earth. And we, we're just working on a one-year cycle where we place in during the summer and withdraw in the winter and keep it in equilibrium.
Okay. We've been listening. I just was sitting here and listening.
Hey, we really appreciate your time, Lou.
Again, if you would like to come see us in operation, you're welcome to come to Montrez and see what we're doing. And we're, we're happy to, to show you. And it, it, the, the system is sophisticated. The computer controls behind it are sophisticated, but the physics are really pretty straightforward.
How long has you, has your home been on?
I think I'm at eight or nine years now. And we've had almost no repairs and maintenance in that period. Probably less than $200 has been spent on maintenance in eight or nine years on it. And so it's, it's functioning well.
So the technol, your technology's been around for about?
We first perfected, we got to the 75% efficiency. I think it's now almost seven years ago was the, the first prototype that achieved our objective. I think it's now almost seven years ago was the, the first prototype that achieved our objective.